67 years later in East Baghdad, we lost Specialist Torre, Specialist Sinteren, Specialist Fishbeck, Specialist Campo, PFC Cook, Specialist Hartwick, and PFC Oliveri. All gave their lives in defense of this nation, and we remember their ultimate sacrifice. We ask the blessings of the Lord on this board, the county of Lee, the state of North Carolina, and these United States of America whose national motto is "In God We Trust." Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you have the agenda, is there anything to add to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we have two items: the workers' compensation insurance renewal
Oh, I missed that.
And the property and liability insurance renewal from the NCACC.
We have two items to add to the consent agenda: Item 2S, workers' compensation insurance renewal, and Item 2T, property and liability insurance renewal. Any questions? Any additional items to add? Do I have an approval regarding the additional agenda items? Motion's been made to approve the additional agenda items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along, first item on the agenda are the public hearings. We have the public hearing for the fiscal 2022-2023 budget. I now proclaim the public hearing open for the 2022-2023 budget. And just a reminder, if you are interested in speaking on behalf of or opposed to the budget, we do ask that you provide us your name as well as your address. So first, anyone for the 2022-2023 budget, please step forward, address the, for the record, your name and your address. Anyone for the budget? Anyone in opposition of the 2022-2023 budget? Going once, going twice. I now close the public hearing on the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 fire district rates. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone for the fire district? Anyone opposed to the fire district rates? Seeing that there are no one for or against, I close the public hearing on the fire district rates. Next item is a public hearing on the capital improvements program for fiscal year 2023-2027. I now open the public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak on behalf of the CIP for 2022-2023? Anyone opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, I told my wife I was gonna be late tonight. I now close the public hearing on the CIP for 2023-2027. Next item is the public hearing on the installment financing related to the purchase of the buggy factory located at 115 Chatham Street. I now open the public hearing. All those in favor to speak on behalf of the installment financing related to the purchase of the buggy factory located at 115 Chatham Street, feel free to come forward. Anyone opposed? Seeing that there are no one for or against, I will close the public hearing on that, and I will call my wife to let her know to start dinner early. We have no public comments on the schedule. Next item, I gotta get ahead of myself, excuse me. Under old business is the resolution and purchase of the buggy factory building, and I will turn it over to Madam Barrister. She's looking at the manager.
I'll be glad to take it.
Please.
He was moving so fast, I gotta catch up too. All right. Before you is the agreement, the resolution, excuse me, to purchase the buggy factory building. The budget impact is 5.125 million. The board just has now held a public hearing on the financing, and the agreement would, that you would, or the resolution we passed would be for us to move forward with the purchase to occur on June 30th. When the board approved us originally to move forward with this project, there were a couple stipulations. One was that we get approval from Saga that they would continue to lease, and one that we would get approval from the city of Sanford to lease their space. The Saga Board of Directors have voted and have agreed to extend their lease. We don't have the lease yet, we just need the signature from the chairman, and the city will be discussing their lease tomorrow night. So hopefully the city will approve it. Their lease is for a four-year period. They did not want to commit to a 10-year period, so we have reduced their lease to four years with options to renew after that, 12-month intervals, so they can continue on after that, so.
So we can move this item to June 20th?
That's right.
Once we get approval from the city council that they're willing to do the four-year lease.
To approve this resolution, you'd have to waive your policy anyway, so we're recommending that you not, and vote on it on June 20th. Be happy to answer any questions.
So we're not gonna get the five-year deal you initially talked about with the city?
No, sir.
What happened?
The city manager, my conversations with him, talking about building addition onto the city hall to account for growth in their water and sewer department, they need additional space for utilities now that there will be providing service to Chatham Park, Siler City, and have entered into agreement to take over the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer System in addition to Fuqua, a contract they have with Fuqua and a contract they have with Holly Springs. So they need additional people, and at the same time, about talking about building on, he mentioned moving their staff out of the buggy over to that building as well. So when I asked him if they were ending the one-stop shop, he said, "No, we could build additional space for your staff, and I don't think that's a good idea. I think it works better when we have more of a neutral site," even though the county would own it. You have a site downtown where, you know, the staff that's in that building operates pretty much independently to create that one-stop shop without us. And say I've been down that road before with having employees from the county over at their facility, and they didn't really feel like county employees. So I don't really wanna put employees through that again, and, you know, I thought we had a good thing there. Hopefully, you know, if we buy the building and keep it going, they will see that we need to keep it going and that they don't need to leave when they build their building. But, you know, I think it was August last year when we first started discussing buying the building, and if the board remembers that when we entered into this agreement with the city back in 2014, it was pretty much the thought that the city would buy the building when the lease was up. And so when they said they could not afford to buy it, of course, I stepped in and thought it was important that we keep the one-stop shop together, and got this board to agree to move forward, and so it was kind of a surprise.
Well, that changes everything, in my opinion. Why, if the one-stop shop was working so well, and they're not going to go beyond the four years, we'll be left with the building and our people downtown. How much it costs for us to build a building on the courthouse ground? You know, and I think you also need to consider that... I'm not so sure that I want to support going downtown if we're gonna break up the one-stop shopping. I just soon invest money in property that the county owns down at the courthouse, because at some point in time, we're gonna have to deal with the new jail anyway.
And additional courts.
And additional courts.
Yes, sir.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think they offered us to, our county folks, to move in with them. I don't think that's something we wanna do, but they did.
I can't recommend that.
No, we've been down that path.
Yeah. So that's why we're recommending that we wait and vote, you know, after we see their commitment tomorrow night at their board meeting about their intentions.
Well, thank you for listening.
Do I have a motion to move this to 20 June?
Did you wanna wait to see what the city does?
Absolutely.
Can we table it until next week?
If I recall the structure...
You don't even have to take any action.
So I'll make a motion that we table it till next meeting, so we can see.
Motion's been made to table the approval of the resolution and purchase of the buggy factory till 20 June. Any further discussion? And if I can add, I did talk to Mayor Mann on Thursday, and he was intimating that he wants to maintain the one-stop shop. He doesn't foresee them moving out in four years because they still have to build a building, and they have to go through that process. So it's a possibility they'll be there for at least five years. Any further discussion? All those in favor is tabling this till 20 June, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Under new business, Kiwanis Children's Park Phase II contract proposal request.
We're about to have the Santiago show. The next few items.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Sir, thank you very much for our opening. That was great. Thank you. Our first project, the agenda tonight is our Kiwanis Children's Parks Phase II contract proposal request. At this time, we're seeking approval of proposal submitted by Withers and Ravenel to provide site inventory, layout, design, and admin assistance for project or Lee County Kiwanis Children's Park Phase II in the amount of $49,400. Based on the park's master plan conducted in 2018 and our Phase 1 improvements, our county parks and recreation is seeking implementation of the second phase of development as presented in the 2023-2027 CIP for the design, construction, and management for our KCP Park Phase II. We are requesting that Withers and Ravenel provides the site inventory, layout, design, and admin assistance for this project in the amount previously discussed. The Lee County Parks and Recreation Department was awarded a part of granting the amount of $2,900,000, and this project require a local match. So pending any questions, sir.
Any questions, Santiago? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the proposal by Withers and Ravenel to provide site inventory, layout, design, and administrative assistance for the project Lee County Kiwanis Children's Park Phase II in the amount of $49,400. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Yes, sir. Our next item is Project 4841-0121, Lee County Library Site Selection Approval. Sir, after careful consideration supported by stakeholder engagements, which was library boards, friends of the library staff, public surveys, engagement forums, our design team, vines, and architecture successfully consolidated community feedback and developed dominant themes which were, which helped guide an innovative county library program. This phase of the project culminated with a site evaluation and recommendation from several possible locations. Two emerged as the most likely due to key factors like parking, nature preservation, impact on existing facilities, and utilities. Our construction manager at risk team has recommended Site B1 as the best suited location for this project. This recommendation is also supported by the library board and county staff. If approved, the Development Services Department will begin surveys and site exploration to determine suitability. Also, the proposed site library is on the property that was obtained through assistance of OT Sloan, with restrictions requiring the property to be used for parks and recreation. Per the conditions of the restriction, Mr. Sloan can authorize the waiver of the restrictions. The information and associated documents have been submitted to Mr. Sloan for consideration. The approval of this site is contingent on the authorization of the waiver by Mr. Sloan. Thank you.
Any questions, Santiago, on this library site? Did you all have a chance to review it?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the library site proposal for Project 48410121, Lee County Library. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, Santiago, you're busy tonight.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We are, request for change order approval for Project 483802R21, which is our Hillcrest Drive parking lot. We're presenting Change of Order 7, Change of Order A, which actually is a credit going back to us, Change of Order Number 9, which is ADA access ramp to the Lee County Government Center, and Change Order Number 10, which is additional grading and landscape that was required. These change orders address punch list items identified during closeout inspections. Change Order 10 addresses ADA accessibility concerns identified as after the construction of the crosswalk on Hillcrest Drive. This change order will address uneven surfaces by replacing brick for stamped concrete and by widening the access ramp to our government center. So, sir, the amounts are Change Order 7 is $707, Change Order 8 is the credit of $2,307,81 change. Change Order 9 is $11,295, which is the access, ADA access, and Change Order 9 is the $1,320 for additional grading and landscape. So pending any questions, sir.
Any questions for Santiago on these change orders?
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the change orders on Project 483802R-21. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Before you sit down, I need to ask a question regarding Horton Swimming Pool. Where are we on that?
Yes, sir. So today was our mobilization day for Horton Swimming Pool, so we had both our pool contractor and our pool house contractor on site today. Dumpsters, roll of dumpsters were delivered, as well as porta-potties. Permits are on hand. We have some, they've started to identify some issues with some of the supply stuff, so we addressed those with finance today, just to make sure we stay on schedule. They're on site. They should be mobilizing for the teardown in the next couple days, and we should be done with demo hopefully within three weeks. We have some minor hiccups. We identified some things that need to be abated and mitigated before we can move forward, but we'll do that through change orders, so that will not be a big deal. Obviously, in a building this age, and with some of the materials they were using back in the 50s and 60s, we may encounter some more issues, but that is the nature of renovation. But we are moving forward as of today, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Reeves. Anything else for Mr. Ralda? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the fire budget, excuse me, the 2022-2023 Fire District Budget Ordinance.
Good evening. You have before you the drafted ordinance for the fire department budget for fiscal year 2223. If the board chooses to consider this tonight, you will need to waive your policy to hold a vote following a public hearing on the same night of the public hearing.
Any questions, Elisa, regarding the district, Fire District Budget Ordinance? Do I have a motion to waive the policy?
So moved.
Motion's been moved to, excuse me, motion's been made to waive the policy on our public hearings and voting on the Fire District Budget Ordinance for 2022-2023. Any further discussion? All those in favor of waiving our policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Fire District Budget Ordinance? Motion's been made to approve the Fire District Budget Ordinance, and just a reminder, there was no increase in any of the fire districts this year, and I commend the fire districts as well as their board of directors and the work that was put forth by the Fire Advisory Board. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the capital improvements program.
Yes, sir. You have before you the resolution to adopt the CIP along with a summary of the CIP that was presented to you back in May. At this time, if you want to consider the capital improvements program at this time, you will also need to waive your policy about voting the night of a public hearing.
Does anyone have questions, Elisa, regarding the capital improvements program for fiscal year 2022-2023 to fiscal year 2026-27?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a comment real quick. With the board meeting with the Board of Education next Monday to go through the middle schools, may want to wait and vote on this until the 20th, because that could change the priority listing for the schools and the timing after you take that visit. So I would recommend that we wait and take a vote on the 20th.
So moved.
Motion's been made to table this vote until the 20th after we visit the schools next Monday. Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. How many have been signed up for that, by the way?
Six.
Six of us?
Yes.
Ooh, okay.
It will be noted.
We'll have the attorney with us?
I'll be with him.
Okay. The assistant attorney.
We'll have one of them.
Okay.
Plus Lisa.
So six board members will be present, and do we have to make a public announcement?
We do.
We did? Okay. For those in the media, we will not be holding an official meeting. We'll just be visiting.
It will be noted as an official meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have the majority.
We will not be voting on anything.
We will not be voting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the 2022-2023 Budget Ordinance.
Yes, sir. You have in your package the budget ordinance that's been drafted for fiscal year 2223. Again, if you're going to consider an adoption this, tonight, you will need to waive your policy about voting the same day as a public hearing. I will tell you that the ordinance has been drafted with the changes that you approved on May 20th, and I can go through those if the board so chooses. If not, the ordinance is up for your consideration.
Any questions, Elisa, regarding the May 20th meeting? Is there any motion to amend the ordinance?
I think we have to, we have to vote to change our policy.
We have to waive the policy first. Okay.
I make a motion that we waive our policy.
The motion's been made to waive our policy on a public hearing to take action on the ordinance for the 2022-23 budget. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. Mr. Chair. The motion is to amend the budget as presented. I make a motion that we amend the 2223 budget ordinance and instruct the county and finance officer to work with the Lee County Sheriff to make the following changes. In the revenue, one, adjust the tax rate according to 72.573 cents, adding additional fund balance appropriated to sheriff vehicles, net change, $448,000. Expenses, adding 15710 Sheriff's Department for salary fringes and equipment, adding 116964 to Sheriff's Department for capital purchase of vehicles. Sold-on expenses, adding 18466 to jail department for salary fringes and equipment. Net change is 448140 in expenses. The purpose of this change is to add two additional road deputies to the sheriff's budget and to address the staffing issues at the jail that we have present. The motion instructs the county manager, financial officer, and the sheriff to allocate these funds and line item needed to address the issues that they are having. My motion is before you.
All right. The motion's been made. Each of you have a copy of the motion in front of you. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor of to amend the budget ordinance as presented with the additional amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Need to approve the budget as amended.
Now we need, now we need a motion, now we need a motion to approve the budget as amended.
So moved.
Motion's been made by two commissioners. We'll take both of them.
That's right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the budget as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And if I can say thank you to the staff for all the last-minute hoops we had you jump through. Okay, the next item on the agenda is legislative goals discussion. There's two, there's two components here, and if I can just add, on the 14th of June, the North Carolina Association of County Commissions is hosting a legislative day in Raleigh. I will be attending. Who else will be attending?
I will.
Ariana will be attending. Anyone else? Commissioner Carver? If you have any topics that you would like us to present, I know that I spoke to Representative Salz, and have we heard from Senator Bergen?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. We'll chase them down. We'll find them. So if you have any topics you would like us to present to them, please bring them forward. Give those to Jennifer and, I guess, Haley, you and I. Are you going as well?
No, we're going triangle J.
Okay. Okay. So that's on the legislative goals discussion for the 14th of June. The North Carolina Association of County Commissions is putting forth proposals must be submitted to the NCACC by September 12th, and if you have anything long-term that you would like to see the 2023-2024 General Assembly deal with or address as it pertains to Lee County, please get those forward to us so that we can compile them, and then we will present ordinance in the future. Any further input for legislative visit next week from those of you that won't be attending? If you think of anything, get it either in contact with me or Jennifer or...
I have a subject that I'd like some clarity on. I didn't realize that there's some sort of distinction made between a jailer and law enforcement within the sheriff's department. And I understand the BLET. I understand that training, but if you consider what a jailer goes through... I understand that training, but if you consider what a jailer goes through in the course of a day, they're pretty much at risk anytime and outnumbered in those cell blocks. But when it comes to the fairness of benefits and salary, I think the legislature would have to address that issue. It just doesn't make sense to me that they would be treated somewhat indifferent, but there may be, may be a legitimate reason, I just don't know what it is. They're all hired to protect and serve whether you're in there or out in the county.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Again, if you have any subjects you would like us to address next week, please get those to either the vice chair, myself, or Jennifer. Managers reports.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a formal report tonight, but I do want to let the board know that we've received two letters from DEQ on the Moore Center. The first is approval of our removal plan, the plan of action. So that's a big hurdle that we're over. We'll be meeting with TerraQuest tomorrow to discuss our next steps in removing the contaminated soil and tank from the premises and hopefully be moving quickly in that regard. The second is a letter that they've received our financial assurance and have approved our financial assurance. Those were the two items that the community college and the state board of community colleges needed to move forward with the crack capital project and the lease. So in discussion with the president today, she thinks they'll be moving forward with the lease of the building, and it's going to try to get it effective July one. So that will save us, if we can get a transfer to them July one, it'd save us a lot of money. If you notice, there was an increase in our property and liability insurance, and most of that was attributed to the added value of the Moore Center to our property schedule. So when we get that off of there, we can save quite a bit of money on our, on our liability property insurance for next year, so. But that's a good sign. It's also a good sign that DEQ feels comfortable that if the community college could get some work started in the buildings, that they could do so. So nothing to really hold them back now. So I feel like the county attorney has done a great job to get us over these hurdles.
It's a team effort.
The money that we have to set aside, is that in perpetuity? It's got to go forever or?
No, sir. Once, it's, it's really almost like a line of credit that we have with the bank, and the line of credit goes away as soon as we get the letter of no further action from, from DEQ. Now it'll take a few years to get that. Even after we've completed the remediation, they'll require a certain period of time that we continue to do groundwater monitoring around there. And once they feel comfortable that there's nothing floating around anywhere around there, they'll give us that letter, and typically, if we do our job right, it's probably about five to ten years that we may have to hold on to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the manager regarding?
During our budget workshop, there was a gentleman that came before the board who was handling the Moore Center, and he mentioned having two people working over there.
Yes, sir.
Would you refresh my memory on what that was about?
Yes, sir. We, when we took the building over, we needed, I mean, it's a huge facility. You can't, you can't just leave it vacant, so, and plus it needed to be cleaned up, so we authorized Robbie Walters, who's the deputy director for general services, to hire a couple of people and clean that building up. And I think Mr. Randolph will probably attest that the job they have done makes it very tempting to just sell that building right now. We could, we could probably double our money right now, but the building looks great. Those, those gentlemen have done a great job, and, you know, the facility is, you know, I feel good about turning it over to the community college that's in the condition it's in right now. If we would have turned it over back in December to them, I would have felt really badly, because it was, it was in terrible shape. But it's, it's pretty incredible the amount of work these two gentlemen have done. Both of them retired employees from Morelli, so they knew their way around the plant, and they've done a great job.
Do we no longer need them?
Well, we've made the suggestion to the college that they hire these two individuals. You know, if they want to know where everything is and how everything works, these are the two guys they would need, so hopefully the college will talk with them and try to hire them.
Have we, did we do it in writing or just conversation?
I've just done it in conversation with them.
Unless the board send a letter making the same recommendation and also send those two gentlemen a letter of a thank you note from the board for the work they did for us.
A big bad motion, sir?
So is.
Motion has been made to send a letter encouraging the community college to employ those two individuals as well as a letter of appreciation for the work and their effort. And I do agree of seeing the conditions of that building and what they've done with it. Any further discussion on the motion to send letters? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I don't have anything further, Mr. Chairman.
That's great. We'll adjourn.
We have commissioner comments, so we'll start with Commissioner, Commissioner Lovick. Glad to have you safely back from your cruise.
Yes, and you're safely back, too. Glad to see that.
Yep, the mountains were wonderful.
Good vacation, good getaway. I'd like to commend commissioners and staff and all for the job we did on the budget. I'm proud of what we did, being able to lower our taxes, and our county's in good shape, and I'm proud of that, and proud of the work each one of you did on the budget. I'm glad to be seated here with you and our staff and all, too. Thank you for that. And also, by hearing six of us are going to look at our school system, I think it's a, I think that's what we need to do for our community, for our people that voted us in, that's what we need to do. Not that we're checking on things, but let them know we got their backs in ways, so I'm proud of that also, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Reeves.
I want to thank each of you for getting this budget approved so quickly and flawlessly. That's, that's a good sign, given the times that we're all living in right now. That's a good sign, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, I want to commend everyone as well. You know, a few week or so back or more, the sheriff come and told us our needs, and I'm glad we were able to get together and give them that last piece that he says he needs. I think it's a start for the needs that the jail has, and it's, it's always, it's easy to say you're back to blue, but if you, you know, they believe it if you do things like we did, and all the while being able to cut property taxes three pennies. So thank you for everyone who's worked on that.
Commissioner Carver.
Just listening to the comments about the budget, I think it's remarkable that we're in a, a place in time where Lee County is so blessed that we have the kind of finances to support this kind of budget, the increase, the COLAs, everything, and still have a prospect for growing, have a prospect for the reevaluation that's coming up. We're not unique in North Carolina, but we're certainly on the top there, and I'm appreciative of that. The other thing I would say is that as, in my capacity as being trustee to the community college, there have been several comments about how the sense of cooperation with the county has really been appreciated by the, by the, by the college. And that's come mostly from the president, Dr. Chapman, and of course, the chairman of the board, Julian Philpott. But the bottom line is, and maybe this gets back to what you just said, that the whole idea of the rapport that we have with the community and maybe with ourselves makes it a good environment for all of us to work, and I'm appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Connect.
I think mostly the commissioner said it, but I just wanted to say I think your invocation was spot on today. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Lavalley.
Sure. Of course, I want to echo the thanks to our board and to our county manager, Dr. Crumpton and staff, that worked so tirelessly on getting this budget prepared, and I think that it's a good step forward. I also wanted to share a quote that I saw last week. "Our flag does not fly because the wind moves it. It flies with the last breath of each soldier who died protecting it." And thinking of Memorial Day and remembering the lives of those who laid down for our country and the families that still very much remember them. Thank you.
And I, too, would like to thank the management and staff for all of the work they've put forth on the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget. I do want to say thank you, Joyce, for the employees appreciation luncheon that we hosted last week. It was enjoyable, it was pleasant, it was very interesting. They threw an apron on me, and I, I volunteered. So I appreciate the opportunity to, it was intense. We had this room packed full of employees enjoying a lunch hosted by the staff. So again, thank you, Joyce. Thank you for the staff. Thank you for the, the chair, department heads and such that helped serve the employees on Thursday. It was good to see in, in this post-COVID era. I have nothing further. I do want to say thank you again for the board and the staff and the budget and the CIP and the fire districts and such, all the work and effort that's gone into those. Again, thank you. Well, I will definitely have to call my wife, because she's not even preparing dinner. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
You got the same one I gave earlier.
Motion's been made to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.